Good afternoon and welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting for April the 17th. All of our council members are present. We will begin this meeting with an invocation that will be offered by Beverly George of the Sokokai International Buddhist faith. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Chase Pendergrass from Troop 451. So I'd invite you to stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our practice is purposely chanting Nam Myo Horenge Kyo, which is the invocation. Before I do that, I'd like to explain what that means. Nam Myo Horenge Kyo is the Mystic Law of the Universe. It is a practice of transforming the four sufferings of birth, aging, sickness, and death into the four virtues of eternity, happiness, true self, and purity. Nam is dedicating one's life to the principles of eternal and unchanging truths. This dedication allows us to exhibit the wisdom to deal effectively with any situation creating the most valuable outcome. Myo, wonderful law of Miskatla, expresses both the enlightened nature of a Buddha and the deluded nature of an unordained person, and the fact that they're essentially one. Renge, the symbol of a lotus hour because the lotus produces both flower and seeds at the same time. It illustrates the principle of the Samhain to loyalty of cause and effect. This means that the very moment we chant Nam Myo Horenge Kyo with the intention of improving our lives, the life condition of Buddhahood imbued with courage, compassion, and wisdom emerges within us and guides our actions. Kyo represents words and voices of all living beings. It also refers to sutra or teaching, indicating the teaching of the Buddha. Nishin Dachshin, the founder of this Buddhism, in one of his writings asked us to live harmoniously as members of any group with the Miskatla, embodying spitting of many embodying one in mind, directing our hearts towards unity. I will now invoke the Mystic Law for that purpose for this council. And then I will read a very, very small passage from the Lotus Sutra scripture.
Thank you, Beverly. Scout?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Beverly, and thank you, Chase, for helping us get this meeting off to a great start. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is awards and recognitions. Okay, the first award and only award we have tonight is a presentation by Councilmember Thompson in recognition of the Mesa Public Schools District SciTech Expo Science Fair winners. Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, we are recognized Danella Kovo and Bonnie Haywood for their award-winning achievements at the 2017 Mesa Public Schools SciTech Expo. After an internship as a young scholar with Quantum Energy Sustainable Solar Technologies, Danella found a passion for enhancing solar technology through designing new photovoltaic cells. She was recognized for her commitment to enhancing and improving this technology by being awarded the Best Affair Student Award at the SciTech Expo. Danella is still working to improve the technology and spends about 35 hours a week collecting data and making enhancements. Bonnie Haywood was awarded Best Affair Teacher for achieving the highest leverage or the highest average of student scores overall. Her unique teaching style brings real-life problems into the science class. A self-described tough teacher with high standards, Ms. Haywood is doing a great job of bringing the real world into the classroom. At the expo, the students that participated under the guidance of Ms. Haywood researched projects that are important in today's society and moved on to the Arizona State Science and Engineering Fair. The results from the state fair came in late last week, and I'd like to congratulate Danella and two of Ms. Haywood's students for earning awards at the state level. Both Danella and Ms. Haywood's dedication and hard work is admirable, and we look forward to what their future has in store. We wish both of you the very best.
They're here today? If they're here, why don't we please step forward and let's take a photograph so we can put you on social media. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Smile and go. Thank you. Kids are smart these days. The next item on our agenda is to take action on the consent agenda, so I'd invite Mr. Kevin Christopher Forward to read the consent agenda.
Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Apollo Foundation Incorporated, one-day charitable event Saturday, April 22nd, East Mark Great Park, 10,100 East Ray Road. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for JDRF International, one-day charitable event Saturday, April 29th, Sheraton Mesa Hotel, 860 North Riverview. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Albertson's, 441 North Val Vista Drive. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Mesa Liquor, 1930 East Broadway Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Wine to You, 2450 West Broadway Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Amazing Jake's Food and Fun, 1830 East Baseline Road. Item 3G, act on liquor license application for Osteria, 3609 East McHale's Road. Item 3H, act on liquor license application for Sam and Luca, 1959 South Power Road. Item 3I, act on liquor license application for YZ's Karaoke Cafe, 1350 South Longmore. Item 3J, act on liquor license application for Cider Court, 31 South Robeson. Item 4A, act on bingo application for Viewpoint Resort Recreation, 8700 East University Drive. Item 5A, act on one-year renewal contract for the executive physical examination services as requested by the Human Resources Department. Item 5B, act on contract purchase-one-replacement sport utility vehicle for the Economic Development Department. Item 5C, act on one-year renewal contract for phlebotomy services for the Police Department. Item 5D, act on one-year renewal contract for protective equipment for the Police Department. Item 5E, act on three-year term contract for microfilm conversion services for the Police Department. Item 5F, act on five-year national cooperative term contract for automotive lubricants and related products for the Fleet Services and Fire and Medical Departments. Item 5G, act on contract purchase nine additional mobile two-way radios, accessories, and related equipment for the Fire and Medical Department. Item 5H, act on contract purchase replacement upgrade software for IT firewall security as requested by the Information Technology Department. Item 5I, act on one-year term contract for Motorola radio parts, accessories, and services as requested by the Communications Department. Item 5J, act on contract purchase a replacement generator and transfer switch for the Communications Department. Item 5K, act on three-year term contract for light-duty automotive body repair services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5L, act on one-year renewal contract for original equipment manufacturer and aftermarket solid waste truck body and sweeper body parts for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5M, act on three-year term contract for automotive deep-cycle sealed case batteries for the Fleet Services Department. Item 5N, act on three-year term contract for traffic signal maintenance services for the Transportation Department. Item 5O, act on one-year renewal contract for 15-kilovolt aluminum electrical cable for materials and supply warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 5P, act on contract purchase one replacement lift truck, forklift, for the Water Resources Department as requested by the Fleet Services Department. Item 5Q, act on one-year renewal contract for replacement ultraviolet wastewater disinfection parts and supplies for the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant for the Water Resources Department. This purchase is 58% funded by the towns of Gilbert and Queen Creek and 42% funded by the Enterprise Fund Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant Joint Venture. Item 5R, act on contract purchase two replacement pickup trucks and one replacement light-duty cab and chassis vehicle with a utility bed for the Engineering and Water Resources Departments. Item 5S, act on contract for Pioneer Park improvements, guaranteed maximum price number two. This project's funded with the 2012 Authorized Parks Bonds. Item 6A, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Arizonans for Children Incorporated to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Mesa Visitation Center, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6B, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Child Crisis Arizona to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Arizona Kinship Services Program, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6C, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa Police Department to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Mobile Field Force Bicycle Patrol Unit, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6D, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa Police Department to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for Crime Prevention signage and materials, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6E, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by the City of Mesa Police Department to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for support training and investigative resource enhancements for the Missing Persons Unit, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6F, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by East Valley Adult Resources to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Meals on Wheels Program, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6G, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Arizonans for Children Incorporated to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Mesa Visitation Center, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6H, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Mesa Public Schools to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Services for Native Americans Student Success Programs at Salk Elementary, Fremont Junior High, and Red Mountain High Schools, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6I, act on resolution authorizing and supporting the submission of a grant application by Native American Fatherhood and Families Association to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their Fatherhood is Sacred, Motherhood is Sacred Program, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6J, act on resolution authorizing and supporting submission of a grant application by Visit Mesa to the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation for their collaborative cooperative marketing partnership efforts, and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 6K, act on resolution setting May 22nd, 2017, as a public hearing date to review the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 annual assessments for the Mesa Town Center Improvement District Number 228. The proposed final assessments do not include any rate increases. Item 6L, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into the First Amendment to the lease agreement with option to purchase with Benedictine University for the city-owned property at 225 East Main Street. Item 6M, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Sunbelt Land Holdings LP relating to property located northeast of East Elliott Road and South 96th Street for the purpose of opting into the Elliott Road Technology Corridor zoning overlay. Item 6N, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a utility services agreement with T. Golden Foundation and Arizona Corporation that modifies requirements in Section 3 of the Terms and Conditions for the Sale of Utilities to allow for the connection of a building at 12,347 South Sausman Road, a property located outside the city limits. Item 7A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the Development Agreement with Art Space Projects Incorporated and Art Space Media LP relating to development of the 1.7 acres of real property at 155 South Hibbert. Item 7B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an access easement agreement with Village Bloom LLC for portions of city-owned property located at 155 South Hibbert. Item 7C, act on resolution authorizing a conditional allocation in fiscal year 2017-2018 home program funding to Art Space Mesa LP for the Mesa Art Space Lofts Project. Item 8A, introduction of ordinance regarding Z16-056, the 11,500 through 11,600 blocks of East Warner Road located at the southwest corner of Warner Road and Meridian Road, rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow development of a single-resident subdivision. Item 8B, introduction of ordinance regarding Z17-007, the 2,300 block of East McHale's Road located east of Gilbert Road on the north side of McHale's Road, a rezoned and site plan reviewed to allow for multi-residential development. Item 8C, introduction of ordinance limiting Sections 9-6-1, 9-6-4-D10, and 9-6-5 of the Mesa City Code to allow for a reduced street lighting pilot program and the use of LED streetlights. The pilot program will be in effect between June 1st, 2017, and December 31st, 2019. The areas to be included in the street lighting pilot program are within the desert uplands area and the City of Mesa electric service area. Item 9A, act on ordinance authorizing a transaction privilege and use tax amnesty program that will be in effect from June 1st, 2017 to July 31st, 2017. The program will allow delinquent taxpayers to have certain civil penalties and interest liabilities evaded during the scheduled time period, and in doing so, it is anticipated the city will benefit by receiving revenue, resolving aging tax account receivable balances, and clearing delinquent tax returns. Item 10A, act on subdivision plat, Red Mountain Business Park, the 3,200 through 3,400 blocks of North Higley Road located south of Loop 202 Red Mountain Freeway on the west side of Higley Road. Item 10B, act on subdivision plat, Los Palomas Senior Living, the 9,09100 blocks of East Broad Street or Broad Road located west of Ellsworth Road on the north side of Brown Road. That should be East Brown Road. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, are there any requests to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That was a particularly long consent agenda. We appreciate Mr. Christopher getting through that. I know there's a lot of work that's gone into a lot of the items on this agenda. There's a lot of people here to see this vote, so thank you for being here. There's been a motion made by Mr. Glover, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of the items on the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 11A, and that is the introduction of an ordinance for zoning case Z17005 to rezone from RS43 to PEP and RM2 to PAD, and site plan review for property located west of Crisman Road and south of Southern Avenue, approximately 9.4 acres. This request will allow for a multi-residential development and future office development. I do have one request to speak on this, and that has come from Mr. Reese Anderson. Mr. Anderson, please step forward. I'm sorry. Well, sure, let's have the applicant state the case, and then we'll hear from Mr. Anderson after that. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, Phoenix, Arizona, here on behalf of the applicant Crimson Development LLC. I'm happy to go into as much or as little detail as this council would like, given that this is only the introduction of this ordinance and that we are to set a public hearing for May 8th. But with that said, I will briefly talk about the case and what it is that we're proposing to do. Again, I will defer to this council on how much detail they would like me to get into. But very quickly, the site that we are talking about... The site that we're talking about is this approximate 20 acres that is west of the southwest corner of Crisman and Southern, outlined in black. We are requesting to rezone the entire site and site plan approval. When you look... Well, and the request is, is that 11 and 1/2 of the acres, which is south, the southern portion of the site, would be rezoned for residential, and the northern 8 and 1/2 acres would be rezoned for office, PEP zoning. When you look at the development that's occurred in the area and this kind of challenging infill site at a mid-block location, we believe that our proposal makes sense. We know that staff is recommending denial. We went to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they unanimously recommended approval. And so we know that we come to you with a split decision. But we are certainly appreciative of the work that's gone on in this case to bring it to this point. We have worked hand in glove with staff from our very first meeting back in August of last year up until the present to try to create a site plan, open space, pedestrian experience, all of the good things that Mesa desires to see in their developments, to make them high-quality, and we believe that we've achieved that. That certainly was reflective in the comments that Mr. Wesley made during this council's study session last week, evident by the compliments that were received at the DRB Work Session, and certainly the unanimous recommendation of approval from the P&amp;Z Board. As I mentioned, we've had multiple discussions, not only with planning but with economic development, open, honest discussions about what is the highest and best use for this challenging infill site with multiple constraints. And we're appreciative of those open discussions that we've had because it allows us to understand one another better and allows us to try to address one another's concerns, to move forward in hopefully unified fashion, at least on some fronts. But as we start to look at the site, you can see the development that has occurred around it. With the residential that is occurring to the east, to the west of us, and the school facility, on our east side, we have a post office and church, and obviously, south is undeveloped. So we think there are a number of constraints as you look at this site, from its location, from its exposure, very limited exposure along southern... Well, excuse me, yes, along southern, which is why we've pushed the office up there. We believe that's viable, and as I know that the Office of Economic Development has briefed this council, there certainly are desires for office and the need for office developments here in the city. And so we purposely have located it along southern to provide for that opportunity, and we believe that it will come. The other constraints, obviously, when you start to look at it, is limited visibility and exposure from the US 60 major highway running through there. And so when you look at all of that, we believe that we meet the goals and policies and objectives of the general plan. And I can go into the details if this council would like, but with that said, I again will keep my comments brief. If I need to go more, I will, but we would request this council's approval at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. And you correctly note, this is the... What's before us today is voting on putting, setting the public hearing for May the 8th.
Yes.
At which time there'd be opportunity for the public and you and council to debate the merits of this. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I've been working with Mr. Ray on this project, and he does bring up a good point, as well as our economic development group, brings up a great point of needing the office space and making this an employment area. But as Mr. Ray points out, when you look at what's surrounding this proposed site now and what's just to the east of it on the other side of Crisman Road, in my opinion, the ship has really sailed. As a council and as an economic development group and as a planning and zoning group, we haven't really held to our guns in the past to make the employment corridors, true employment corridors, but rather loaded these corners up with fast-food restaurants, gas stations, and adult living facilities. And so with what is being proposed today with the office space fronting Southern Avenue, I'm fine with that, and with the residential piece on there to the south of that, I'm fine with that piece too. So with that said, it's my desire to go ahead and move this forward.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Ray? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Reese Anderson.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I'm just gonna load up one graphic just so the... As they say the cliche, a picture tells a thousand words.
Mr. Anderson, we all know who you are, Reese, but it might be good just to note your name and address, and if you're... Are you representing someone in this scenario?
Yes, Mayor. I will answer that question, and I thank you for the reminder, of course.
You bet.
Like you said, Reese Anderson with LaFerre-Pew Lake. My address is 1744 South Val Vista. Again, recognizing this introduction, but I could just share a few thoughts here. I'm here this evening on behalf of a client of our firm, as well as I'm here tonight on behalf of Susan Demmett and her client, Superstition Crisman Partners. And I'll show you a quick graphic to where everyone is. If you direct your attention to the screen, you can see where Brennan's client's case is, Z1705. This area, they're kind of in a maroon color, was owned by Crisman Superstition Partners for approximately the past 30 years. And in your record is an email from Susan Demmett, not only authorizing me to speak on her behalf this evening, but gives a little bit of history, and I have that slide, but just in the essence of time, I won't read that into the record unless you'd like me to. Let me show you that in December of 2016, our client, Bella Floor Communities, which also has a project right there at Ellsworth and Southern that I think a few of you are familiar with, and I think some of you may even been to the site, beautiful project, closed on the area in blue. And so this evening, it's as simple as this, Mayor, councilmembers, we are here in support of case Z1705. And I speak on behalf of the property in blue as well as the property in red. We're fully in support of this application. And with that, Mayor, as brief as I could, I'd be glad to answer any questions that I might have, or I can even show you a graphic of how we've coordinated on future plans, but I defer to you and Councilmember Thompson.
Mr. Anderson, is it your intention to come back on May the 8th as well, or is this our best crack at you?
I'll be back if you'd like me to, yeah. Please ask any questions tonight or then.
Well, in the event you aren't here on the 8th, I guess I'll just go ahead and ask the question. So you represent Bella Floor Communities, and I guess, given the name, that implies that this is a residential development company, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Crisman Superstition Partners, the other attorney that you mentioned, do you know what their intention is? Is that also a...
Yep.
Is there a pending proposal that that be residential as well?
No, there's not a pending proposal for residential on that piece at all. I think if... Let me advance a slide here if I might.
Sure.
This is your current zoning, and you can see there's a hodgepodge of things in there, everything from one-acre lots to, if you look at the piece that I'm here on tonight, you can see the interior piece is neighborhood commercial, just a strange location for that. I don't have an answer for why it's there, it just is. This is what your general plan looks like in the sea-long Crisman. You see mixed-use activity with employment there, kind of just... They're kind of just this round area. Our thoughts on it really is, and I'm gonna do a bit to just draw in the air if I could, this is an appropriate location for employment, just not that much. It really needs to be along the arterial streets. And you can see here with the plan coming forward from Mr. Ray and his client, as well as what's gonna come online from our client, that it satisfies those goals in the general plan to bring some high-quality needed housing in the area that's owned. Especially ours is gonna be condominium, for-sale product, and that will help everything else that's going on to the east where the medical campus is. That's the genesis of where all the employment uses are going. I may have answered your question with that explanation.
Yes, sir, you did. Has your client filed a zoning application yet for that piece?
Mayor, we have not. We anticipate doing it any day now. We have been working diligently on some utility issues, mainly the sewer line. We think we've got those figured out. I will just show you real quick here. This is a conceptual plan only, showing Brennan's client's property as well as...
Given that's the case, I think we might be going too far afield in terms of what's been...
I don't want advocating for anything other than to say we have not and we will soon.
Well, I'm the one that invited you to talk about things that were off the agenda, so that was my mistake. But before I let you do that, maybe I'll stop you if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor, for keeping me on track.
No. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Anderson? Yes. Relative to this zoning case.
I just wanted to say that when Mr. Ray brought this to me back in August or so of last year, subsequently, right after that, Mr. Anderson and then also Susan Demmett also brought their projects a couple of weeks later. And so the one thing that I asked them to do was to do this conceptual master plan. I wanted to ensure that the project not only was a high-quality project for Mesa, but that the projects all flowed together. And so I made sure that they went back to the drawing board and worked together to make sure that there was walkability in the area and that all these projects kind of flowed together and how they were put together, not just hodgepodge'd together like we see across our community now. So there's been quite a bit of work going into this from all three parties to get to this point.
Okay. Well, it looks like we'll have plenty to talk about for a few council meetings going forward, but Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Anderson, there's some property owners to the west of this, or to the north and a little bit to the west. Have they reached out to you? Whether they have or not, has there been any discussion with them? And do they support you or...
Great question, Councilmember Freeman. Mr. Mayor, I would like to have, with your permission, have Brennan Ray answer that. This is his case, and he has worked extensively with all of those owners in the area, but the short answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
If that's okay, Mr. Mayor, let me have Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, to answer the question, we have worked with the school on our west, that vacant parcel on our west, as well south of the school, as well as the church on the east, and they are all in support of what we are proposing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So there... Any additional questions, counsel? Mr. Whitaker.
We're just voting to talk about this later, correct?
Correct, yeah. The item on our agenda now is setting it for a public hearing on May the 8th. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. The motion's been made by Mr. Luna and seconded by Mr. Glover. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous, setting this for a public hearing on May the 8th. Thank you very much, gentlemen. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present, and I do have two requests to speak. First, what they will hear from is Deanna Villanueva Saucedo. Deanna, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council. My name's Deanna Villanueva Saucedo, 1513 South K Circle, Mesa, Arizona. I'm here this evening in my role as Board Chair for the Mesa Association of Hispanic Citizens, otherwise known as MAC. Our organization has a nearly 30-year history of advocating on behalf of the Latino community and for public policies that are of benefit to our entire community and Mesa Latino community specifically. As an organization, we applaud recent city council discussions around diversity, outreach, and the need for measurable outcomes. There are issues for which our members have long advocated for their full inclusion and consideration as the City of Mesa conducts its business of good governance. The very nature of the word government and governance must take into account the relationship between those being governed, the residents of a community, and those doing the governing, you all up there on the dais. A democracy depends, for its very livelihood, on meaningful contacts between the people and the government. So one of my favorite quotes from a high school textbook, it's a pretty basic principle, yet one that should be taken seriously, certainly one that we, as an organization, take seriously. Our community has changed and is increasingly diverse with different ages, cultures, ethnicities, backgrounds, socioeconomics, political ideologies. Connecting with our diverse community in an authentic way should be a core value and a core activity as you engage in your work of setting policy and direction for one of the largest cities in the nation. How else do you gauge what is needed? How else do you gauge what will be supported? How else do you gauge what citizens truly desire for the future of their community? I'm also here to dispel the myth that a multicultural community or communities of color don't want to be engaged. This is a complete and utterly ridiculous falsehood. It does mean, however, that you may need to consider outreach in a new and different way. Not everyone in Mesa has the luxury, wherewithal, transportation, time, knowledge of city functioning, to come in front of city council and say their piece, or serve on an advisory board, or come downtown to a city festival. But yet, they all look for safe, economically sound, viable communities in which to live, work, and play, and raise their families. We have families with language and cultural barriers, economic barriers, people who come from different places across the globe where maybe things were done differently, people who remember when people of color couldn't live wherever they wanted in Mesa, days of segregation here in our own community, single-parent families juggling to keep their heads above water, families struggling to get by. That, more and more, is Mesa's reality. However, that doesn't mean these same individuals don't want to be considered as policies are set forth and funds are distributed. So as you continue your increasingly difficult budget discussions, strategic planning sessions, we encourage you to think about how outreach and diversity can be woven throughout. How does city management reflect the community that it serves? What are short-term and long-term goals around this issue? What is the long-term vision around this issue? What will be measurable outcomes? How is success defined and measured? We, as an organization, look forward to continuing what I believe to be a positive, working, collaborative relationship with you and city government, also one that isn't afraid of difficult conversations when needed. So I hope that you will continue considering us a partner as you move forward with these discussions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next card I have is from Mr. PJ O'Malley. Mr. O'Malley? Just to remind you, may I already know, Mr. O'Malley, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak.
PJ O'Malley, I'm... Live in Mesa, 321 East Higley Road. And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. and council members, you're in a position to appreciate what I You may or may not be aware of the current drive to nationalize our police. It's happening quietly with the media, of course, not giving you a clue. What we're seeing is the federal government is arming, conditioning, and training local jurisdictions to knuckle under federal standards. Needless to say, when they dangle riot gear and armaments and training, even helicopters and tanks, in front of cash-strapped cities, there are always strings attached. Good example of that is in Arizona, where 1/3 of our state budget is paid for in federal dollars. They own us. So the leadership cannot say no to anything it would demand. You don't need to be reminded that we don't need anything close to what happened in Nazi Germany with their Gestapo, the horrors of the USSR, all happening after they had nationalized their police. But this is what's in store if we don't put a stop to it. So I joined with some others to wake the town and tell the people, listen, there is a deliberate strategy going on here, and that's to bring all police slowly but surely under a national umbrella without you being aware of it. Our counter-strategy is support your local police and keep them independent. I hope that rings a bell for you. One of the tactics they use is to foment riots and looting in various communities, like they've done in Ferguson and Baltimore and Milwaukee, Charlotte. Then when the police become temporarily overwhelmed, the people cry out, somebody help us, and the feds step right on in, meaning big dollars and big controls are on their way. This is happening right now. So why am I here? To ask you to just review an article in the New American Journal that covers this area. So you'll be able to understand better that we really have a police crisis looming in America. If you do yourself the favor of becoming more informed on this issue, I think you'll appreciate our concern. I'd like to get back to some of you after you've had a chance to give it your attention, say, one week. This is the magazine, and we're gonna pass them out right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. That concludes the cards that I have from items from citizens present. You don't need more, do you? Okay, thank you very much. That being the case, that concludes the business we have on our agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.